So I'll bring the meeting to order, the Shelburne School Board. And do you folks have any adjustments to the agenda? No? I would like to... Which one of these is not... Search, seizure, and interrogation 612 is not going to be on our... And just as a discussion matter, I just want to add 6.3, which is a discussion of the Act 46 Forum, which we need to hold before the vote.
So do you need to take this off the consent agenda also? 8.3.2, if we're not adopting it? Right? Because it's still being worked on?
No, that's a typo. Yeah, so I guess we'll take 8.32 off of there. I don't know why. That was accidentally put on there. Okay. Thank you for catching that. Approve an unapproved policy and consent agenda? That never happens. Okay. So with that, I assume our three audience members are from the art department, and so they're not here to have audience and communication. So with that, we'll go to 4.0 and write into the presentation.
There you go. So these are our three wonderful visual arts teachers. And look at what they have displayed on the tables-
I know, this is amazing.
-as they begin their presentation. So Karen Lilly is our middle school art teacher. And Kathleen Grant is one of our Keta Five. And Pete Boardman is our newest member, Keta Five art teacher. He was just employed this year. So he's just rounding out the end of his last year here.
Great, great year.
Awesome, awesome. So you're up.
I'm not sure if you want. First of all, we just did lay out a bunch of art. And we aren't going to necessarily address what's there. Some of it will be up in the slideshow. But so you can walk around, look where okay if you get up and move. We are pretty used to that in our classrooms. We are the Shelburne Community School Art Department. And we will just jump right into the nuts and bolts and kind of explain what our curriculum is set up like, but show you a lot of art in the process, because I think that's always what's more fun. We really focus in on the artistic process. That's the number one thing that gets at the brain development and all that sort of stuff. And I've just read from this. We build off the National Arts Standards across artistic disciplines. So I think you've seen this in the music as well. It's very similar in terms of the same core standards. It's pretty similar to what all of us do when working in teams in whatever field we specialize in, the artistic process. And that gets at the heart of our classrooms. Students are getting the skills they need for the constantly evolving world out there. And they get to do that while expressing who they are as people, using their own voice and doing it in their own way. Art is an empowering experience that brings people together. There's just something about making stuff that we all love to engage in. So we begin with the four overarching components. The first one in the artistic process is creating. And it's really hard to separate these components, so we're going to jump through. But what you're going to see is that the artwork that we show you will fit into all the different components. The biggest one is creating. The bulk of what we do is this: creating. Kids crave making, the tactileness, the movement that comes with it, the encompassing of all the senses, and the accomplishment of actually making something. And at the end, we'll have a movie that will really kind of show the whole process of kids working and more artwork that they create with that.
Yeah, and I'd say, you know, being my first year having my own classroom, it's really amazing to see these kids come in and their eyes just light up because they come in and they have this space where it's pretty much all for them to unleash this creativity and this imagination that sometimes they aren't able to really unleash. They kind of get this... Oh, yeah, sorry. They get this ability to just be exactly who they want to be in that 40 minutes, 43 minutes, and 90 minutes for Karen. So it's just great to see them come in and use all that time as much as they possibly can. And I'd say the biggest issue is getting them to stop working at the end of class.
Yeah, the cleanup part is always the hardest.
Yes. So this slide shows some examples of how we encourage our kids to present the artwork that they have made. And this first picture on the top left is myself and my third graders. We made this collaborative giant minion that you can see kind of tucked in there. And that was one of the first projects that I ventured into this year. And it turned out to be incredible to see how they work together to solve problems. And they were so excited. We even presented it to the middle schoolers during lunch in the cafeteria. And then on the right, those are Karen's projects. Do you want to talk?
Yeah, I can just talk quickly. One of the sixth grade arts comic course standards is that they actually had to put up an art show that is designed and planned by them. And this one was... They put up just a bulletin board, but these are their Chinese opera masks that they got to design their own characters. Chinese opera was also studying cultures on some of the teams, as well as in music. So we did a lot of linking with that. And so they made these little clay masks. And then they actually wrote a character artist statement about who their character was. And we ended up talking about stereotypes. What does it mean to be a Chinese person or a Chinese character? And what does that mean when you are actually then writing this little story about that? So we really went in deep. And then they got to put it up together as a group. And then last but not least, more masks.
Right, more masks, because kids love masks. And so this is a project I did with my second through fifth graders. And they learned about African masks. And I gave them the option to either create an animal or just an abstract mask using patterns with paper mache. And we even used toilet paper rolls. It's hard to see with this contrast.
I think there's a more mask show in the movie.
Yeah, there's some more in the movie. But it was amazing to see their ideas flow. And they each chose an animal that really spoke to them. And then on the bottom here, you can see I had them write up if their mask had a superpower that it would give them, what would that superpower be? Which was especially funny to see the second graders on that. So it was really a great project to get them.
Yeah, and going again in the number two in the whole of the three, four components in presenting. This is kind of our capstone project, the Arts and Citizenship Class, which some of you might have heard about, where eighth graders come in. It's four trimester. They spend one trimester doing an independent art project. They spend another trimester at the craft school. And then they do another trimester in community service. So with this, they come in and they actually write their own KUD, which is a lesson plan of what they're going to do. What do you want to do? What... How are you going to meet the standards? And there are actual standards that they cut and paste in there themselves. And where are you going to go with it? And what's your plan? What are you going to do day to day? And this is what they come up with. So this is actually Alan's son up here. They had a whole overarching theme for this one. I can't remember. I think it was opposites or black and white.
Black and white.
Was that what it was, black and white? For this one. And so he did a lot with time lapse and with long shutter speeds with photography. And this person had N.J. going for this one. This person had to do with, I think, it was different times of like, one was the 1980s, one was the 60s, and then one was like now. So those are all skirts from different eras. And then we have another one going on here, too. So that was part of their capstone project. And they end up putting up a show as well. They put it all up themselves. It's like a pop-up art show in the course of a half an hour. And we have one coming up at the end of May, too, if you want to actually come and be a part of it. They throw it up on a Tuesday, I think, May 26th. So, yeah. The third one.
So responding. So this was something that I was really learning to do as a first-year teacher, is trying to get my students to think about what they created and not just make it and then leave it in the classroom and say, "Okay, I made something." But really getting them to really go back and reflect on what they were creating. So this is an example of one of my rubrics for the Cubism Project. We learned about Picasso. And so it was... I asked students to describe in their own words what cubism is as an art style. And this was a third grader who said, "Take a picture and make it different." Moving around... Move... Sorry. It's a third grader. "Take a picture and make it different shapes and sizes." Which, you know, in the third-grade mind is pretty spot-on for what cubism really is. It's kind of taking what you see in life and just rearranging it and changing the sizes of maybe the eyes or the sizes of the shape. And then I also had them go along and decide whether they think they met the standards, which would be to follow all the steps of the process. And then...
Yeah, and from here, we have photos of just the actual handouts that we do. But this is constantly. Constantly you have a kid coming over, "Well, what do you think of this? Can you give us some feedback on this? How does this fit into things?" And kids are doing it with each other. "Well, what do you think of mine? What should I do differently?" There's this constant give and take that happens. That's pretty wonderful. So we threw in what we have for in terms of pieces of paper. I did... I have portfolio sessions I do with my kids. They each have a Google Art Drive. After, the number one thing when they're handing things in is that they have to take a photo of their piece, store it in their portfolio. And then they actually hand me the physical piece. I never really grade the physical piece. I see it, I can put it up. That to me is more important than I get it up. So if I actually do want to actually assess that particular piece, then I ask them to hand it in the Google Classroom so that they can then deal with the physical piece, having it on the wall, that sort of thing. But also, they then have a portfolio that they can go back and look and see everything that they've done, from sixth grade to eighth grade is the goal. And then maybe it can then trickle down, which we are slowly working on integrating into the elementary levels as well. So they, two or three times a year, they do a portfolio evaluation where they put up their favorite piece and their best piece, which might not be the same thing. And also what they felt was maybe their weakest piece and what they would do differently. We have a critique process that we do crits, where the kids actually in eighth grade lead them. We have small little cohorts in that capstone where they sit down and they interact with each other. And they give positive views and places to go. So that's pretty wonderful. And we do that constantly again in class, all the time. And then I also have them do some research outside of school. And we get to the mural project, which is a couple ways away. We don't have to go there quite yet. But I had them do some research on other artists and the arts. And they're constantly, again, learning about other artists and the arts and reflecting and evaluating and seeing how they connect to society and then how they connect to themselves. So there's this constant connection happening, which I think is what leads into the next slide.
And also the inspiration. They're seeing that these styles have been around for so long. I see kids being like, "Whoa, that... I can't believe that was created in the 1950s." And they're almost worried it was 2016. And you can't even like, "How did..."
Yeah, we had a discussion of modernism vs. contemporary art and how the difference is right there.
Oh, can I cut in just for a minute? Because I have a funny story about art history. So as you know, I teach kindergarten through fifth grade. And I was walking through... This is a kindergarten story. We have a few cute ones this year. There are some interesting kindergarten stories. But I was walking through Pete's room one day. And he's ready to do Van Gogh with the kids. And I said, "Don't worry, they won't know about the ear thing." You know, they just won't. They're too little. So he's sitting down with his book, ready to read. This is Vincent Van Gogh. Soon as he started, he cut his ear off. And another kid said, "What did he do that for?" And then somebody else said, "Did it grow back?" And then finally, I turned around and I just thought that was hilarious. And then I did a Mona Lisa project with kindergarteners. And everybody knows who Mona Lisa is. At least I thought they did. And I held up, you know, a print of Mona Lisa. I said, "Who can tell me who this is?" And I'm, "It's Jesus." I had to just breathe a little bit and not laugh because I didn't want to hurt this child's feelings at all. I was like, "Okay."
Yeah, and just wait, the Mona Lisas show up later.
Oh, yeah, the Mona Lisas. I knew the kids. They didn't fake. But I just had to compose myself. There was another person in the room and he just like... It's just so...
It's never a dull moment.
No, no.
We literally have pmergrind most of the time.
Yep.
So this is the very recently completed mural that was in the process for a long time on the left here. So this is a little bit of the process that went into it. There's much more and it goes deeper. But in a nutshell, we had Karen and I had her students learn... Well, she first introduced what is street art and what is a public piece of artwork. I mean, you could talk about it more, but the idea of putting something in a place where it's going to be public and people are going to see it, how does that... How are people going to respond to that? And my students... So the process basically was we designed this mural. We took both of our art styles. We're both... Or all three of us are artists. And Karen and I have very different styles. So we sat together, we drew out this plan, and we said, "We want to create the design for this, and the kids are going to paint it. And we're going to give them the freedom to just go in and make it their own, even though it's our design."
Yeah, to butt in, it was your committee, which constantly changes names, but it's the Social Emotional Learning Committee or the Climate Committee really wanted the rules of what the expectations are for the playground.
Right, that's how it is.
And they had approached me in the summer. And I managed to pull Pete in and Pete along. And then we decided to be Artist in Residence, which is something that we even thought about bringing in a couple of the muralists as Artist in Residence. And then we were like, "No, we're artists. Why don't we do it?" And so then we did the design, and then we incorporated the kids. And they had ideas and kind of pushed us in different directions. We studied the Philadelphia mural projects and how murals can change communities and really create positive influence. And then we also studied graffiti art. And they created art in conjunction alongside of the mural in class. They also... My kids did pachacuchas, which are design... It's a design presentation, 20 slides at 20 seconds apiece. And each kid was in charge of one slide, and they presented it to kindergarten classes-
Kindergarteners.
About these mural projects. So they each like really researched a mural that they loved. And so it was this kind of in-depth sort of thing that brought in... We tried to bring in as many kids as possible, even though it was eight by 20. And some kids might have just did this on it, and that was it. But there was a way that they felt a part of this whole huge community. And it just got put up a week and a half ago. And we're hoping to get all of the kids and every single person. The PTO ended up paying for the paints. And so the entire community was pretty involved. And we want to get everyone involved in front of it. And I can't imagine what the number would actually be. But really, it's by we teach to bring everyone together in a lot of ways, so.
And the excitement, I was working with like the maintenance men to put it up.
They were awesome.
The excitement of them coming out and seeing it and being like, "Whoa."
And then giant ladders. And we're like, "No, you can't come see it yet. There's ladders, remnants going that direction."
It was really powerful and made it all worth it.
Is that on the back of the small drill?
It is, yeah. And it's high enough that no one can reach it, so it's...
It's somewhat safe. But I think it would be safe anyway. I think everyone feels such a connection to it.
Yeah.
Outside.
It's outside?
Yeah, the PTO...
You can see it says "safe, responsible."
Yeah, so yeah. And then these, all this here, it's written in all different kids' wrote, so it's all in different handwriting. It's all the little playground rules, like be kind, be respectful, stand in line, that kind of thing.
Oh, so even tying into, you might have noticed Champ was swimming behind the sailboat there. So I even talked to my first graders about, you know, just that sense of local community. Even though the first graders didn't get to... I didn't let them touch the exterior paints. They got to see it in the process in the back of the room. And they're like, "Whoa, what is going on back there?" And then I tied in this project where they got to create their own version of Champ. And it was really great to see.
Yeah, this is... So we had... This is the third. So we had creating, presenting, and then this now connecting. How does everything connect? Already you've heard us with the mural and everything connecting. But how does this connect to their lives? How does art connect to their lives? And that's like the number one thing. We know in education, it needs to connect, it needs to make sense. And so when they walk into the room, we hope to give them a way to connect, whether they just fall in love with whatever we present to them or somehow we give them enough choice, which I think is really important. And we try and build that in. If someone didn't want to do Champ but actually wanted to do a dinosaur or a rat or a little turtle, we usually are pretty open to that sort of change in terms of giving them those sorts of choices. And then here again, I threw in another Arts and Citizenship piece, Le Black Love, that was all written in photography. This is a painting. And then we had someone who wanted to do The Night Sky in an umbrella. So that whole choice-based thing starts to come in with giving it personal meaning and that external context. With younger kids, it's often, "Oh, my goodness, Champ, what a great idea." With older kids, the more choice you give them, the happier they are.
And Champ is real.
Yes.
Totally.
I was in his in-peace class.
I know. I think, yeah, the funniest part about when I was introducing that project, I was like, "So, you know, no one's really seen Champ." And they're all like, "Well, I've seen Champ." "He was at the baseball game." So it was pretty funny. It was like, "Oh, yeah, the first graders."
Yeah, it's so fabulous.
So moving on. So connecting what they're interested, what they think is awesome. Again, with the minion. Kids loved this pop culture idea of these minions. And so what better way to give them an experience where they can tie in their own lives and also make this incredibly giant minion? And it's paper mache, it's paint. They got to... I gave them a piece of paper and I said, "Okay, turn this rectangle piece of paper into a cylinder with a dome top. How would you do that?" And just watching their brains turn like, "How can I do this? How do I cut this so that it can go into a cylinder and then the top has to be a dome?" And so that was one class. And then the next class, we took cardboard and did the same thing. And then they got to paint it and make arms and attach feet and put it on display.
There was a lot more to it than that.
Yes, well, I didn't know.
And in the arts, and I don't know how familiar you guys are with the term visual culture and visual literacy, but that's a huge, huge component of the arts right now. And when you're teaching is being able to read images and being able to take it apart and understand. When a girl opens up a fashion magazine and recognizing that blonde woman after blonde woman after blonde woman, this whole ideal, and how that affects them. For me, I want to talk to them about that. We want to engage with these images and how it's affecting them. So we have that. We try and incorporate the idea of how do we take apart images and how do they affect us? In this respect, for me, tying back into the mural project, we did some stuff with words, but they did a one-word project and they did selfies. And they had to replace their name with one word that they would describe their ideal self. And some of them went really kind of fun with the whole tween idea. This person is a selfie of herself with a donut, but she has wisdom on the side. And there is, it's the playful side of her, but also she's a brilliant, bright young girl. Here we have another selfie. Determined. And so they all... They kind of ran with it. So the idea of selfies, which they're all about, and that can be a whole other component again. Another way of bringing in technology, that kind of thing, too. We haven't really talked about that as well, combining new media and old media. So it's really kind of an important part of the curriculum, I truly believe, is that whole visual culture and how do we read images, which is such a big part of our culture nowadays.
And going even further into how art can be connected to their lives, we also connected it to their other school subjects. So I'll talk about mine. This is some students I worked with, the music teachers, to create some art to go outside of their music wing. And so we borrowed some instruments. And we looked at the shapes of a violin and the ukulele and the guitar and talked about how to create that complex shape just by making a collage of simple shapes. And so we tied in their music class with their art class.
And then you have words showing up later on, too, which you did 3D, which kids love 3D.
Right.
We've done that with a couple other ones, too.
Volume.
And tessellations, she and I connected about earlier, with math in seventh grade. They learned the rotation, reflection, and I can't remember what the other one is. But they'll tell... Translation, I was going to say, they can tell you that. So we did some artistic versions of tessellations. And this one right here, I did it with Team Winton, where they read the book Seed Folks, which is about connections in the book of different cultures and that sort of thing, and how art, the transformative power of art, where they grow this garden and all of these people come together and they create artwork from it. And we actually created little seed packets that filled with jelly beans. I photocopied them and they built these seed packets and they put them in little kids' backpacks. And so it really was about... So they created seed packets, but they're joy flowers. And then on the directions and the instructions, the kids were supposed to share or somehow come up with this whole package of how to, again, bring art into the world. So building off of their literacy.
And I had a moment the other day where we... My fourth graders just learned about making block letters and then learning how to make it look three-dimensional. And the teacher, when she dropped them off, she said, "I just want to tell you, we're doing these narrative stories, and every single one of my students spent so much time making the title block three-dimensional. They just loved it so much." So they're tying it into their writing.
And that's what we love, is when it goes the other way, too. There's this push and pull that happens.
Yeah.
Oh, there she is.
There's a Mona Lisa minion.
A minion Mona Lisa.
And they were so serious about this project. I mean, to the point where I told them that it had to... The background had to really resemble the Mona Lisa. And it was a minion face. And they were like, "Okay, I'm not sure. Should my minion have one eye or two eyes?" And I'm like... And they were really into getting the background looking just like Da Vinci's Mona Lisa. And we talked a lot about how we created that. And I just... They're right. All of them are so funny. But they were very, very serious in getting it just right. And come in the office and see them, they're hanging up.
They're great.
And then Hokusai, Japanese printmaker. We put up... Well, I read them a story first about Hokusai. And then I put this Great Wave up on the board and had them just try and recreate their own Great Wave. And, you know, even though they are being inspired and looking at this artist, they're also making it their own. I have a few students who changed the sky color, who added little people in the boat. I have a student who made dragons popping out of the water. So kind of just taking this really, really famous painting or print and adding something of their own to it. And then here's an example of the Picasso project I was telling you about earlier, which, you know, she's taking her face and she's putting her mouth on the side and she's making shapes in her face. She's not using realistic colors. So it's amazing to see them take one of these really famous artists and make it their own.
Yeah, and with these guys, there's a lot of Van Gogh being introduced, and Picasso, and Mona Lisa, and I love that. And what that does is I feel like by the time they get to sixth grade, they have an understanding of these...
They will know what Mona Lisa looks like.
Yes, they have the basics of the Mona Lisa as a minion, if need be. And so I feel this freedom to blow it wide open a little bit more and introduce them to perhaps that lexicon that's a little bit different than the typical art historical way of being. So we pull in the abstract expressionists. And we create our own versions of abstract expressionism in different ways and forms. We discuss contemporary art and choice-based sort of stuff. Here, I brought in... I actually lived in Africa when I was in seventh grade. And I brought in outfits that I had made when I lived in seventh grade in Africa. And the kids try them on. And it's pretty amazing because there are some new Americans in my classroom. And that's where I almost get teary-eyed thinking of it, who got so excited, recognizing that this was fabric from Tanzania or other places. So they studied the fabrics and recognized the different colors and how they integrate and how we would never... and how we would never, we're dressed in our beautiful grays and blacks and the bright colors that happen. So then they ended up doing some printmaking and then they ended up doing weaving as well and created artworks from that. So not only is it the product, but it's a process. Like, we just talked about, the process is really almost more important than what they end up with at the end.
And, um, of course, we are artists ourselves, so we included some of our own artwork, um, to show you. You can see, this is my, one of my paintings up here and another one of my, um, sculpture slash painting. It's, it's actually cut, cut out masonite board that's coming off the wall. And so a lot of times I'm, I'm showing kids my, my, my preference in art, who inspired me. And then I'm also giving them a chance to tell me who inspires them. Maybe that's not the same for me as for them, but it's amazing to see, you know, as artists, who inspires you? And I think that as artists ourselves, we, we often inspire our students, so.
Yeah, and I think it does. We, we have to recognize our biases when we're teaching and what we love and how we teach and that sort of thing. And when we make that very clear to our students, um, they can then see through that lens that, okay, we're presenting this because this is who we love. You might not love it and that's fine. Um, I am a photographer and that shows in how I teach. And I'm going to show them photography and introduce them and push them in directions in that way. Um, if you want, I think it's linked right here, it's just to a little Instagram thing. I don't know if we can get to it or not. If not, don't worry about it. But this is actually, I took a laser cutting class at the Generator Space, which is the new Maker Space in Burlington. And I did a photograph and they did this whole acting. If you can play, maybe it won't work. But it actually shows the laser cutting that I did. We can skip out, don't worry about it. Someday, you guys can go scroll through my Instagram.
And the last two pieces are mine. I do, um, jewelry making and I paint. And I often bring my art to school with me and work while students are working. Um, I find that it is inspiring for them. They like to see what I do, it's like, wow, you're, you're an artist, are you a famous artist? You know, I, you know, it's just, they love seeing what I'm doing and I think it's important to share with them that.
I think modeling is key, is recognizing that there actually are careers in arts and places and directions you can go in and seeing grownups actually do it.
Yep, and for me, it also sparks ideas that I then do with my students. Or my students will be like, whoa, birch trees, let's do, which I did last year. We did winter scenes with birch trees. So I think it's important for me to model my work with them more things.
We just left them, guys. Um, so the artistic process, promote the artist habits of the mind. I'm sure you've heard of the habits of mind. They're very similar to the artist habits of mind, but this is, um, one thing that I've always used with teaching. And then we also have, which I think some of you might recognize, these are, this is the draft for the graduation standards at C, at CBU. And really, clear and effective communicators, informed and integrative thinking, creative and practical problem-solving, responsible and involved citizenship and self-direction. And we won't flip all the way back to, um, the, there's a, there was a slide that had all of our little papers on it. In the middle, it was actually our rubric for when we grade them for their nine weeks or their trimesters or their, and it includes, it's pulled from here and it's pulled from here and brought together into three different things. One is, is being a responsible and involved citizenship. Another one is being a creative problem solver, um, using the language and tools and art working, uh, art-making. And then a self-directed learner initiative and self-direction. And it pulls from these two things as well as the, um, national core standards or how we assess and evaluate and how they assess and evaluate themselves on a daily basis. And last but not least, before we get to our fancy little two-minute movie, um, how you can find us. So on, we're on Instagram, we are, we're kind of social media people, that's who we are, we're visual people. So we have a hashtag of Shelburne Art that you can go through and you can see all this little art. Um, I have a blog, so does Pete.
I have one also, but I, I use mostly the Facebook page.
Our Facebook page, which is huge. You can see up there, our Facebook page, Shelburne Art, you can like it. I think some of you already do. Um, and then in the community, we are involved in Fine Arts Night at CBU. We do the U-Mar Art Show, we do Open Studio at, I was supposed to say the Pons right here. The Shelburne Pons. Shelburne Pons. So, and then, but most importantly, this is why we would encourage you guys to, the school. We put up stuff everywhere, all the time, constantly.
And come and see us at our classrooms, we'll put you to work.
Yeah, and come on in, swing by, open our.
We have stocks.
So drop in, seriously, we, we love a good visitor.
All right, um, so I put together this short video that kind of, um, just gives you, I know you saw some of the art, but this is fun and it, uh, has our school theme song as the, as the background music. And I, I started off with, um, with the actual musician who did it and then kind of fades into the students singing. So it's kind of an interesting transition, but this is, uh.
If you ever find yourself stuck in the middle of the sea, I'll sail the world to find you. If you ever find yourself lost in the dark and you can't see, I'll be the light to guide you. Find out what we're made of. When we are called to help our friends in need, you can count on me. Two, three, four, we're here. And I know when I need it, I can count on you. Like four, three, two, you'll be here. But that's what friends are supposed to do, yeah.
Thank you.
I'll sing a song beside you. And never forget how much you mean to me. Every day I will remind you. Find out what we're made of. When we are called to help our friends in need, you can count on me. Like four, two, three, four, we're here. And I know when I need it, I can count on you. Like four, three, two, you'll be here. But that's what friends are supposed to do, yeah. Don't ever let go, never say goodbye. Count down on me. Like four, two, three, four, we're here. And I know when I need it, I can count on you. Like four, three, two, you'll be here. But that's what friends are supposed to do, yeah. I can count on you.
That's all folks. That's the last slide. But it was a thank you to you guys for being so supportive of us. Thank you so much.
Very well done.
Thank you.
Very nice, inspiring.
Oh, thank you.
But great video.
Yeah.
That was awesome.
Do you guys have any questions or anything? I feel like we've mainly answered.
No, I guess I had, I had asked Patty to, you know, come in and show us, have you guys come in and show us like, this is like a subjective subject. You know, when a kid learns how to read, you can tell like, oh, they can put together these little words. So I was asking her like, how do you guys evaluate competency? And how do you connect with kids? Because I think we always associate kids being artistic and.
Yeah.
Some kids aren't what we call artistic, but you still have to provide this experience. So how do you do that across all these different kids? So it's neat to see like, you know, I, I know what a minion is, but I didn't know it was that important to those kids. So you can connect to them. And I think one of the funniest things I've seen this month is Mona Lisa minion. You know, that's.
Look in the office.
That one that just popped up was, I mean, that's an, it's just, like you said, you know, like it's an appreciation of like putting things together and like adding your style to something that's a piece of pop culture. Yeah, that's great. And I, I think that in our schools, it's easy to, you know, push out the arts and look at all these objective things. And, uh, I'm certainly not a fan of that at all. And that's great to see all the wonderful things that you guys have done.
Thank you.
I think it's awesome.
Mm-hmm. And they are assessed, you know, just like.
Yeah.
Assess students in reading or math or whatever. I hear what you're saying, exactly. It's like, these kids, I, I feel personally that they need, they're like constantly drilled and they have to be, math and blah, blah. They have to have a chance just to like explore and create and, you know, I hear kids saying in my room, I'm gonna be an artist when I grow up. And, you know, everybody is an artist, that's how, and the I-cans never come in. There is no I-can't. And they just, they get in and they just want to keep working.
Right, yeah.
They, it's, yes, it's, yeah.
And I think a lot of it does have to do with your view of what art is in some ways, you know, if, and we say that to the kids, you want, you might not be the person who can draw realistically right away in 30 seconds. You, you know, everyone knows who that person is and that, everyone's like, yep, that person.
Yep.
And then you have to say, well, number one, it's like, that is like playing a piano, you have to practice if you want to do that. But that's 1% of what art is. What is art? And what's great is that this generation gets that, that it's blown wide open. They recognize that it can be in so many different ways, shapes and forms. So it's almost not even a question anymore.
No.
Different from when we grew up, you know?
Oh, and way different when I grew up. Like, we made ashtrays in art.
There are no ashtrays being made. Yeah, at least at the, you know, what we're aware of. I'd just like to make that clear.
Was there a picture in the, the movie of somebody drew a hand peeling the A off of the?
Yes, I have a couple other on here too. Interactive art, that's another, I didn't feel like I threw in enough of the, um.
Was the hand?
So they had to do a drawing of, um, do a drawing first and then they had to take a picture of their hand or something interactive. So there's one here and then there's like another one.
So the hand was pulled, like it, it was a picture of the.
So it was a drawing of the hand, it was a drawing that they did and then they took a picture of their hand and.
Nice.
There's another floating around with someone who, maybe someone drew an object right there. So this person drew like a little drawing of a house.
Ah, nice.
So it's called interactive art, so.
That's great.
Yeah, you guys can keep, here, check it out.
I was gonna ask you whether, uh, or if you are working with them on the computers with art and computer art yet?
We have iPads. We have, um, we have 15 iPads, so.
We've been working with claymation, um.
Yeah, I, I, that's what I, I'm driving home today, I was like, oh, we didn't throw in a claymation piece. But we have, they do claymation, they're doing.
Um, they have, there's a really cool app, uh, I think it's called Doodle Buddy. And, um, it allows them to kind of take photos and enhance them and even draw on top of themselves in, in the app. Um, I focus a lot on the, the claymation because, um, I think that was. Yeah, they love it and it's.
What is it?
The claymation is like, um, Wallace and Gromit or, so they make little videos with, with sculpey clay and they rearrange. I also took the kids outside with the iPads yesterday to take photos. And then I have, I've been doing a lot with flipping. The, um, Flipping the Classroom is called, where you actually, then you upload videos and they can watch it on their own time. Here's how, so I, I did a couple of videos on how to use a couple of apps, um, for optimizing and making your photography better. Because like I said, that's something that is something for me. So then they can watch that and they can go back into their artwork. And I say, you can't just take a picture. First of all, you have to think through how you take the picture, then you need to go back in and optimize it.
And talk about the codes for the, the arts and citizenship, that was really cool, where you could actually take a picture.
The QR code, which was Alan's idea, which is such a great idea, adding another level too. So the kids wrote artist statements and then, um, for the arts and citizenship projects. And then they also kept a Google Doc of their whole entire process. So when they, um, finish up every single day, their exit card was, they would take a picture of what they've done and write what they've done and what they plan to do next time. And then they have a QR code next to their artist statement that we could then scroll over and it would go to that Google Doc that could then explain the entire artistic process. So that, again, technology adding another level.
Do you see, um, Maker Bots and, uh, 3D printers as being sort of a form of expression that, that may, you know, have relevance for you?
I love it, I love the idea. I feel like, what I'm finding though, like we give them the opportunity of iPads or Chromebooks and in middle school, because they're doing the one-to-one, they want to do this.
Yes, they want to do this.
And I think they're done with the Chromebooks for the time being, for the hour and a half that we have them a week. But I think the Maker Bots and the 3D printer excites them.
So when I did my robot project, if I was able to do the, get them to be really moving, that would be awesome. I would, I, I would need more time and support doing something like that. Because this is what they created, these guys. But I thought, oh, it'd be so cool if I could real, you know, make them move and then get. So I mean, I would love to do that, so maybe it's a thought.
What's interesting is, so you've got the Common Core, the National Common Core Art Standards along with the music and, um, the performing arts. You also have media arts, which is tied in. So it's a whole completely separate thing, whereas, and we are, we are trained to be, most of us are trained to be media arts teachers as well. But, and I don't know where media, I don't think anyone knows, where are the media arts gonna fit? Do we need to hire more teachers? Do we need to integrate it into with the sciences, which I think there does need to be that connection? So that's, it's a really great question. I'd love for you guys to figure that out. Tonight.
But I mean, I think I would urge you when it comes, you know, budget time, putting your plans together, because nobody who's sitting around this table or around budget buddies is gonna say, hey, let's spend four grand on a 3D printer.
Yeah.
But if you, you know, bring it forward and say, this is how we could integrate this into our curriculum and, you know, whether it's interactive or 3D or something like that, I think, um, that we'd be very supportive of that kind of stuff.
Is it Williston doing it now? But doesn't Williston have a 3D printer?
I'm surprised, yeah. And I know Erica before had one that she had written a grant for and, and so, but.
That's cool.
Um, but yeah, and then with the Maker Spaces, I think you guys are gonna be segging into talking about renovations and all of that sort of thing. And that would be interesting to have that sort of thing brought into the Maker Spaces that are being talked about. So, just one song. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
All right, we're gonna have to collect all of our gear. Thank you guys so much.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
No more ashtrays?
No more ashtrays. Those days are gone. Can you believe that?
Pink pine ashtray.
Your voice, I remember mine, my dad.
And my husband has one that his sister made for his dad, his dad never smoked, so he's very. Yeah, he's from a long way.
So I did forget to, we will have a executive session at the end.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't put that on the adjustment. Okay, got it. Yep. So we'll, uh, go to the principal's report, one of you guys.
We do have a principal's report, so we're gonna go through that pretty quickly.
Okay.
Given the time. Um, do you all have one? We have, I have some copies here if you would like.
Yeah.
If you wouldn't mind. So just real quick, I want to remind you that at the top there, just click on the April PTO shares if you'd like additional information about every one of our classes basically, because people do put a lot of time into adding information there. Um, kindergarten screening was great, 80-plus students. We actually have a few more, um, that we welcomed and were very excited. Did a little different process this year and it worked out great. We want to congratulate Isaac Kremenetsov. He won first place in our Vermont State, in the Vermont State GOB, um, finals and he is headed to Washington.
Headed to Washington DC in a couple of weeks.
In a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Pretty exciting. And each year, the Vermont NEA, um, gives an award to the Educational Support Person of the Year. And this year, um, our own Fran Brennan got that award. So congratulations to Fran. And if you would like to read her speech, just click on the speech.
Mm-hmm. And one of our access classes, that's just the classes, not necessarily school-sponsored, but supported by the school, using the school, was Bob Gurwitz's, um, Team America, Team America Rocketry Challenge. So he pulled together two teams and they very nearly qualified out of 800 teams, being in the top 100 and earning a trip to Washington DC. So, great first year. And then, just as a follow-up, he was recognized with the Aw Shucks Award, which was a great night here at CBU where those teams actually came out. We had middle schoolers giving speeches. We had middle schoolers giving speeches and thanking him for his time and commitment cause he does so much more than this rocketry, but, you know, everything from quadcopters and creating stuff that he's been, been doing for years. So, good recognition for him.
Two of our special educators work with our students with intensive needs, um, Jen Randall and Amy Coach Dietz. And they were asked, because of some of the work that they had done, um, they were actually invited to present their service project, um, that they had done in the classroom to, um, a group in Montpelier, um, to advocate for the students that they work for, um, entitled Universal Design for Learning and the, using the guiding principles from the essential best practices in inclusive schools. So, um, wanted to compliment them for that great honor. Um, we also do Mix It Up Day, as you know. We do three of them a year. We had one in March. Mix It Up is when students from different age, uh, grades, ages, uh, get together and they do projects that are just kind of, um, fun projects that nobody has to really do much so that they can have an opportunity to build relationships with one another by conversing with one another as they do those projects. They might be coloring mandalas, they might be going out for a walk together, they might be, um, playing a board game, something of that nature.
And two announcements that aren't on here. One is, we're excited to announce that we've hired Chris Jarred. He is current, well, he's wrapping up as Facility Director at Milton School District this week and will next Monday join us. And come, that's taking Dave Kelly's position. So Dave Kelly is retiring as of June seventeenth, but incredibly fortunate to add Chris to the mix. He comes with years of experience. He actually was Facility Director for the entire Burlington School District, then moved up to Milton and is excited to get in a small school, work with us, get down to kind of the grassroots of things. So, per, we'll miss Dave incredibly, um, but we're real fortunate to find the replacement there. And then tomorrow night, if you're interested, you could join, I believe, Mr. Connor, you're gonna be putting on your parrot hat tomorrow night?
I hope to. I have to get the middle schooler home from OVO class, so I may have to defer to my wife being there.
All right. Middle School Orientation Night tomorrow night for incoming fifth grade parents. If you care to come see the middle school show of Rachel Petraska and Alan.
I know.
Always a highlight.
I know. Yeah, so unfortunately, that's the third thing I wanna do tomorrow. The first thing is go see Alan speak.
That's right, triple booked.
Yep.
Right, any questions?
No.
All right, the speed report.
Oh, except I, I did hear about the, uh...
Trip to Concord Carlisle.
Oh, yeah.
And that was fabulous.
Oh, you know what, that's gonna be for the next time, so...
Oh, it's in here.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Did I put it in?
CSC Wind Ensemble and Concert Choir two thousand sixteen tour.
Oh, you know what happened? I added it. I added it before, I'm sorry, I added it after I had made copies of this for you. That's right, that's right. So, yeah, the...
Fabulous.
Tim, Tim Williams and Christina Hult, they did an awesome job.
Tim Buckingham.
I, what did I just say?
Tim Williams.
Sorry, Tim, Tim Buckingham. Wrong Tim. Sidelining is Tim. Um, yeah, they had a great experience. And our, our group was asked to sing with the group.
With a go, a group of gospel singers.
Isn't that awesome?
Yeah.
Very cool. Thank you for reminding me of that, Kathy.
Sure.
Are you gonna play the professional development video for us?
Nope.
You're not?
But should I? Do I? I don't have that queued up.
Have you seen it? Was it...
Yes, I saw it. They didn't show it at CSS.
Oh, they didn't?
They sent it out to all of us.
I think they just...
Right, we got it via email.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Um, for CSSU debrief, um, interesting thing you may have missed, Tim, is that, uh, someone called the school and said, what are you guys doing to make sure that our water doesn't have lead in it? So they're, uh, they're doing lead water testing for all of the, all of the schools and we'll have results back in mid-June.
Was it our school that prompted that? Is that what you're saying?
That wasn't, that wasn't clear. Someone in the CSSU, so...
Okay.
But there's some schools that have their own wells for water, like Charlotte, and then there's schools like ours that get it from city water. So, even if you get it from a reliable source, you have to test inside, so that's interesting. Um, so...
Facilities committee update?
The facilities committee update. Wait a minute. What am I doing here? Okay, sorry. I'm looking at the CSSU thing for notes and then I got distracted, sorry. So, um, did attend a facilities committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. You've had one since then, right?
We have them every week.
Oh, they're now down to every week? That's amazing.
Wednesday mornings, we'll be having one tomorrow.
Nice. So...
Some days.
Yeah. So what do you, what are, where are we at right now?
Well, Alan, do you want me to go or are you gonna queue up the slides or...
Oh, there we go.
Queue up the slides. Um, what we've given you in the packet were just a couple of spreadsheets that will probably make more sense when we walk through. Kind of a spreadsheet of the current budget and then a spreadsheet of kind of our, our adjustments that we would make to kind of come into budget, so...
I mean, I think the long and short of, you know, we're deep into the process now. We've, you know, the architect is working closely with the, uh, construction manager and, you know, trying to, um, finalize the numbers, finalize the design. And, you know, nothing has been put out to bid yet, so it's all based on estimates. But as Alan's gonna share with you, um, you know, I think everything is favorable and we're moving forward at a, I would say, a pretty rapid pace at this, this point. And I, and I think the design has really, um, you know, changed a fair amount and it's just so much better than where, than where we started. I mean, you heard a little bit of talk about the maker spaces and things like that. It's really gonna be a wonderful addition to the school. So, um, with that, I think Alan will just kind of share the nuts and bolts of the numbers.
Yeah, so, so walk you through just the nuts and bolts of the budget. Um, you know, so back in December when we were in schematic design, uh, came out with a budget. The estimated budget was we'd be right in our nine point two five billion, which is obviously all the money we have, so we gotta stay within that budget. Um, as we moved into detailed design and brought Breadloaf Construction, this was in March, the first estimate that came back with, was problematic. It came in and said, we've exceeded our budget. It came in about nine point nine, um, one million, which is about six hundred fifty thousand dollars over. So what we've been doing since then is, the term I've come to understand is VE, value engineer, where we just look and say, okay, how can we, what, where are we cutting? What are we doing? Um, the most substantial pieces are, we were fortunate that, it was actually Dave Kelly who kind of pushed for this last year, was the idea of doing an infrared scan of the roof and identifying what areas of the foam insulation had been compromised and would be moist, which were still viable. And based on that, when we went back to Breadloaf and said, okay, come back and tell us how, what would be the impact if you simply cut out the compromised insulation and built on top of that? That was savings to the tune of half a million dollars. And they're very comfortable with it. It's, it's not a compromise in terms of any of the R values or any of that. We accepted that one right away, that took care of the majority of it. Since then, it's been looking at, they've done some testing on floor prep. Breadloaf was making the assumption that we were going to have water and, and adherent problems. We're gonna need a real aggressive floor prep. They just finished some testing this week, which says we do not have a moisture because of all the investment that had been made in the facility about ten years ago with rather than water around. Therefore, that was another hundred thousand dollars of savings right there. Since then, it's been really moving to kind of add alternates and things like that that get it there. So when we get to the bids, we can look at the business day. And we're very comfortable within contingencies. Our contingency seemed a little bit tight at the time. But as you can see, we're up to about thirteen and a half percent owners contingency and a twelve and a half percent construction contingency. Really healthy. So we're, we're feeling really good and on budget.
And I think, you know, in terms of the value engineer, I mean, I don't view that we've given up anything. Um, I mean, it's just kind of moving the chairs around a little bit and saying, you know, we like more here, less here. But it's not like we've had to, to date, we haven't really had to make any, you know, hard decisions, say, you know, we've gotta get rid of this, it's all been, you know, can we do this better? Can we do this differently?
So the other...
So one quick question.
Two budget questions again.
The, uh, so like the two articles were a certain number of dollars for the roof and a certain number of dollars for basically everything else. Are you still holding to those two sections of budget?
It's not a conversation that we've had at any time in ours. It's, everything I've understood has been, we're treating it as we have this lump sum of money to accomplish both of those pieces of scope.
Okay, and, and I'm okay with that. It's one of, should we be sure that that's okay?
It's a question we can bring up, let's, let's bring that up tomorrow morning and just make sure that that's okay.
Yeah.
It's one I haven't thought of.
And that's, that's a question, just a question for Bob, I just...
Yep. That's a good Bob question.
Okay. Uh, one, one question that's been coming up from a particular individual who has experience with, uh, HVAC is... There, and you may have heard this question, are they adequate, are, are they, you know...
Well, I mean, I, you know, that que, that question has been beaten to death. And we have, uh, a engineer on it and then we have another resource that we're bringing in. So I think it's fair to say we've got that one covered.
Good, good, good. Yep, I wondered if you had, I just had to ask.
And it, you know, and...
Asking a question.
It was some good feedback and we've gone back and really made sure that what we have, and we're still working through that. But, uh, trust me, when we get done, it's gonna heat, it's gonna cool, it's gonna move air.
Yeah, and that, and I guess, I applaud you for being extremely positive in all of your exchanges. And I know that that question's been shopped around, not just folks on the board, it's been shopped around the town, it's been shopped around to the select board. Um, and, uh, so I appreciate you guys working on that. I do.
Can I ask another quick question? You had mentioned that you haven't gone out to bid yet, but Breadloaf is on the project. So they bid on the project and they got the project.
Well, they bid to be the...
The construction manager.
Construction manager. So where they manage that process of bidding to subcontractors.
Okay, so it's the subs that you are, need to go out to bid for.
Well, they need to, yeah.
Yeah.
Is the project manager on board?
Project manager, Tom Barton is on board. Yeah. So as we sit, you know, we have Breadloaf at the table, we have our own owner's project manager at the table, um, Tim, myself, Bob Mason, yeah, well represented.
Who's the owner's manager?
Tom Barton. He was actually project manager here in this building for their major renovation. A lot of experience with CSSU, with our contractors. I mean, very knowledgeable, been worth his weight in gold already, I think.
Yeah.
Did Doran Whitty or do the, the, uh, architecture on this?
They did not, I forget the company that did this one. So the rest of this, I thought I'd show you, which is just the information that, we have shared this with faculty. This is more kind of the internal workings. But just so that you know, and even elements of this that I'll be sharing with fifth grade parents tomorrow. Just kind of, that's one of the questions, you know, what's gonna be the impact on education as we start to roll this out? So, this is kind of the site plan that we've worked out. And so, just so we're clear, this will be, so here's the school, here's the circle up there. The work we're doing is primarily the and E wing. This is gonna be our major construction zone here, that will be put in as soon as school is done. Actually putting in a temporary road here so we can deliver materials, some storage back here. Fencing that will surround this entire unit and adding a gravel path here so that the community in the neighborhood still has access to the playing fields. Um, that fencing will extend when we start doing the window work here to kind of separate from the playground and that. All of our parking for contractors will be here. So we've asked faculty to kind of find different parking with the exception of the handicap parking and we will have access in the back building here. But the plan is to entirely isolate any construction work from our student body. It's not as if the students will be walking next to construction workers, they'll be coming in and out here. This, when this wing's being done, this will be completely sealed, this wing will be completely sealed when it's done. So that's kind of the, the plan of that, if that makes some sense. So, yeah. So this is the work we're going to do as soon as school's done. We will be doing some construction here and some construction here that's going to allow us to move the classrooms out of that wing. Um, this is, this, this has gone from being temporary construction to construction that we've really designed and say, we want this permanently. So this is the C wing, you've gotta have a band room here. Right now, these are special education offices and services. This is, used to be, so we had the Alpha, this was kind of the Alpha classrooms for a while. Now I have kindergarten, two large class, kindergarten classrooms. What will be done is some new walls and an entrance constructed and a window added here. So this classroom becomes new, there's currently a wall here, it shifts to here. This becomes a K classroom, this K classroom, a little bit smaller than it currently is. And then carving two new classrooms out of here and pulling the computers out. This is our computer lab right now, that's gonna become a classroom so that we can have all five K classes in that wing. It's actually where we want them permanently, so they're nice and close to music. Our cafeteria gym, rather than spread diffusely throughout the building.
What is MS team?
For the purpose of the transition right now, is I'm sorry, in order to move two middle school teams out for the year, this will be a middle school team right here, temporarily, until we can move into the new spaces.
Yep.
Okay, in the library, same thing, this is currently a computer lab here and there's stacks of books here. We're going to be adding walls here, again, these are looking permanent. Classrooms here, hoping to have skylights, that's an add alternate right now. That's one of the pieces that we kind of value engineered and said, boy, we'd really like to have natural light cause obviously there isn't any there. Hoping we're able to make that happen. And then we're able to take all of the existing stacks, create our books here and then opening this up. For the year, we probably won't do a whole lot more work here, but Doran Whitty is also working on a design that opens up this library cause this is a pretty inefficient use of space right here. So we can have relatively the same capacity of library in a much better and useful configuration. So those are staying permanent classrooms there.
The middle school classrooms.
So, they will be, what we'll be doing, this is as soon as those are constructed. Right now, there are eight classrooms in this wing that we have to clear out to purge it. So, we take what are currently three kindergarten classrooms, they move over here. We take and pull four of those classrooms down into here and then we have one that fits here, two that fits here, two that fits here. And we have all our classrooms with that wing completely shut. The compromise that we have is currently, this is a French and Spanish classroom and our French and Spanish teachers, Claire Delore and Meg and Kelly, who we'll meet next month when they do their presentation, they're going to be teaching on cards next year. So they will not have a permanent classroom. They will go from team to team delivering their services. When we're said and done, these will become oral language classes, but we're two classrooms short since we lost basically ten rooms, so... They're aware of that, we're working on how we can make that doable.
Is it during renovation, you're two classrooms short?
Right.
Yeah. Okay. So, make sure. Wait, we just redid this whole thing in long term?
When we shut down ten, we're, we come up short. At the end of the games, we'll show you, we actually end up with space that we can talk about, how do we wanna use that?
Nice.
Um, so this is also work that'll happen this summer, is the roof work. They're actually going to, the plan is to start and get the B wing done. Um, we can actually occupy underneath it, but it's gonna be loud, so we wanna get this done first. Then this wing, we think we can get the three occupied wings done in the summer and then in the fall, we can do the cafeteria and the gym wing, the A wing, and the D wing that is gonna be gut renovated anyways. With the hope that all of the roof is done by October, which is substantial savings, I think, on the bid because they're saying roofing market is hungry right now just because they've been able to be doing roofing since February. So, we didn't plan to do that, but that's been strongly encouraged by the GM. Said, get that roof gone, cause you're, you're gonna be happy if you do that. So, we get to the start of the year, we've got our classrooms placed here. That's completely shut, that gets gutted. The estimate is they believe they can do it in four months so that we could have that wing completely done, which will allow us to move up here at the holiday break at the end of December. With our backup being if things get dicing, we can't do that, then we would do it at February break. Would be when we'd do that move. But wanting to have a mid-year move to get that done. So this is what we'll be making in that wing. So we have pods of four classrooms around the learning commons and the project space. So kind of a sync space, a space to get messy around four individual classrooms. Each pod has its own toilet, has a special educator office, a conference room, another conference room, two conference rooms... Two conference rooms here, actually a small one and a large one. At the end of the wings, two other toilets and an office here. So, what they've been able to design is spaces where of these eight classrooms, seven of them have natural light outside. We'll have one, and it is built in that this will have a skylight, the one classroom that doesn't have an exterior window. And then the core goes up the side here.
Are those toilet spaces unisex spaces?
Yes. And they're going to be single stall spaces, just simplifying that issue, which is getting complicated around the country in some places.
Yep.
So, the hope is by the end of December, this is done, then all of these classes can move up into that wing. And we close off that wing, do the same construction there. We do a little bit of shifting outside and then we don't need any staging here, so we move our staging to here. But everything can basically stay the same. And we just seal off this from this playground here. So, again, access to the facility for construction, workers will be in through here so they're not walking through the building. Finish that, expect we will not have occupancy of that till the next fall, but that will go at least into the summer.
Fall of two thousand and eighteen?
Fall of two thousand seventeen is when we think it will be completely done. So, this probably in the neighborhood of June would be completed, so that that's a little more relaxed moving into it, that's moved in over the summer. Um, we would still then have window work to do in the C, in the C wing, because that wouldn't be done until the following summer. Because that really can't happen when those classes are gone. And so, there's that last move that we'd make over the summer. Foreign language does get a classroom, a middle school team that's been a little bit displaced gets in here. And then one of our K five classrooms can actually be in this, this piece here. Which, if you start thinking about it, that's four classrooms that are currently used out here that we can look at ourselves and go, what do we do? Which, interestingly enough, is just about the capacity of the portable classroom, which, long-term, may be something to consider. So, we've just begun the thinking of how this configuration is going to work for the fall of two thousand seventeen because it really does open up some possibilities of how we want to look at some things.
Alan, while the, uh, while the E wing is being renovated, how will the kids in the K through five get to the, that'll be going outside?
We will be using the breezeway, yeah. And already having conversations about some of our medically fragile kids and what we're going to have to do there. We talked with the contractor, it's really not feasible to keep that pathway open, which is one consideration for going for a February shift as compared to a December shift. Because we're probably more likely to, other than April snow, uh, March and April may be better than January, February, March and April. Also looking at, would we put portable heaters in the ends here?
Hmm.
Just because we can keep that, at our most bitter days with zero outside, we could keep this at thirty or forty with some portable heaters for the time of that. We recognize we've, that's a less than ideal situation, it's just one we can't work around. And that's just what we're doing, the design in terms of the windows right now. Um, looking at double hung windows, uh, this is brick down below, kind of replacing this. And then metal siding above, just to save really on the cost of the brick and kind of get some look and some flexibility in terms of colors.
So, there'll be double hung windows so that the windows can open?
So, the windows can open, they have screens, yeah. It's a nice look, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Just showing, change color, I guess.
(laugh)
And there's just kind of the timing. Uh, we actually have released, the early release, so all the summer work is out to bid now. We expect those bids back in about three weeks. So, that's for that cla, the library classrooms and the C wing classrooms. Um, we expect to be able to release the, the full package bid documents in July so that we can really move into phase two work. So, things are moving along rapidly.
That's great.
So, hopefully that's helpful, because I'm sure the questions will come to you.
Yeah. I mean, this is, this, like, I took a picture of this slide and I just pull it out whenever anybody asks me.
Yeah.
So, I get all the right dates and we're all on the same page and, you know, as an engineer, it's great to see drawings with features on them, you know?
And you give me all the detailed design drawing you want.
I know, and like, you know, when you have, when he did his, when I was at that meeting on the twelfth and everything was in color. You know, it's good, it's good work. You guys are making progress, so.
Yeah, tomorrow, we get to look at the first kind of Google SketchUp, which kind of allows you to drop into the spaces and start to look and see, look out windows and see the views and see kind of, oh, is this a classroom config? It's really exciting to see. Start to play with colors and color schemes and maybe get some art support on that. Actually, that's Tim, that's your specialty, right?
Uh, carpet color.
Gray or gray?
Yeah. Awesome, thank you. So, six point O, discussion matters, which would be six point one is policy. Um, you guys have all the policies in your packets? Any questions or any issues? No?
Um, I thought that common topic today was really powerful.
It was amazing.
And I got to believe that that is going to shape some of the policies of the future.
Yeah, I just, I mean, the amount of documentation that you guys have to do is unbelievable, Patty. I mean, and the, the documents you have to send to each house and the postage and, it's crazy. And even if, even if the investigation that you go into has a, you know, nope, this wasn't bullying, it was just, you know? What's another one? Inappropriate, you know, use of, inappropriate behavior.
Appropriate student behavior.
Yes, that's it. It, you know, you still have to do all of that work and, you know, I don't want to belittle the reason for why you have to do it, but nobody gave you an assistant to do that. And somebody, you know, she alluded to that, like, hey, the only reason this came out well is because I had my legal assistant right here.
Yeah, I mean, you're going to have need, the needs.
They're going to grow exponentially, you know?
I would put in a little plug for our planning room girls because if it weren't for Rachel Oberst and Yaz Gordon, we would not know what to do. They do a lot of work. Um, they, they do the majority of the work.
And Heather alluded, Heather Lynn alluded to the fact that maybe your behavior interventionist that you're hiring will help with frontline prevention as well as also with some of this backend stuff, okay?
Do you instruct the kids in how to, you know, what is acceptable behavior? Particularly with the cyber issues socially?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep, they have basically a curriculum that comes from Common Sense, which is a, you know, a, a organization that's put it all together. Um, you know, we, we start when they're in kindergarten, not necessarily with cyber, you know, cyber is about second grade, I guess. But with all kinds of, you know, how to, how to treat people right, basically, is what the focus is as opposed to calling it bullying necessarily or harassment. But, um, yeah, all about, you know, differences and we have people come in. And we, I mean, we do a lot of training, a lot of proactive work.
Good. You bring, did they bring anything home to the parents? Because is there, there's got to be a role for the parents in this, too?
We send it home. And, and if you look in the, on both the student handbook and the teacher handbook, you'll notice that that particular policy and the procedure that goes along with the policy is the largest one of all of our policies. So, it is incredibly extensive and I think that that's why, obviously, it was important to, to hear what Heather was saying.
Hmm.
And they've been an incredible help, both Heather and her husband Pietro.
And I would add that TERRA Institute and professional development support we've been getting at middle school from sixth, seventh, eighth grade has been tremendous. Because what we're able to do is network with schools around the state and go, you know, who's got a policy to deal with this? Who's dealt with it? And literally, they're kind of at our beck and call under the grant agreement that, you know, hey, you know, and, and we've got a couple of things that we're trying to sort out and they're, they're researching them right now for us for some professional development next week.
Great.
So, it's, it's great, it just kind of opens up our capacity tremendously.
All right. Can you just send a text to Elaine, tell her we'll be probably ready in about five, ten minutes, maybe, ten minutes or so? Um, so, moving on to six two, boards corner, I think the next one is Act forty-six, which I can take care of that because we're, I'm on the communications committee.
Thanks.
Um, so, there is a full communications plan that's going to come out and it's going to be articles and forums. And six point three, one of the requirements is we have to do an Act forty-six forum prior to the vote. And we had had an agreement where we had thought that we would do it the night before, so June sixth, which is a Monday. And could you guys find a space for us to use at the school in order to do that? And it's, I think it's, you know, I don't know, should we do it at? I don't know, six comes into mind, is that too early, you think, or is it?
What day of the week is that?
Monday.
June sixth, June fourth. Is that what you're saying?
June sixth.
The tenth is a Friday.
Or June sixth.
I think six is probably too early when.
Six PM is too early?
I think, just, the days are longer and.
We do it seven?
Little league, I think.
You tend to go seven.
Seven's probably.
Seven, okay, all right.
And so, you want that on Monday?
Monday, June sixth, seven PM.
And you just need a space?
Need a space?
Yeah.
In the grand ballroom?
The grand ballroom?
Yeah.
I think that's great.
The cathatorium?
The caf, the cafe.
The normal.
Cafta.
Yeah, 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 the normal attendance, you're right. We could have it around the flagpole, so.
You have the June ball, it's like, yeah, don't.
Yeah, I know. So, that'll be, and that's, that would basically be going through the same presentation that we gave at CVU. You guys were, you were there, I know you were there. Did you guys come to the CVU presentation? You did, okay. All right.
Um, yeah, if you want some help promoting that with parents, if, just send us a little blurb. We can use Connect Five and push it out to everybody as we get close to it.
Yes, that's great. Cool. Thank you. So, seven point O, action matters, seven point one, last day, we talked about this at CSSU. Uh, the recommendation is June tenth for kids and June fifteenth for parents. Can I get a motion to approve that?
Teachers, though, nothing else.
Second?
So, teachers, not teachers.
Because the teachers will think we get to go every day.
Uh, I'd like to correct, correct that motion, it's a motion for teachers to come to school until June fifteenth. Um, any discussion on that? I think the two school, the two snow days we had, we have the right number of instructional days at a hundred and seventy-five, so we should be good. I totally agree with not going into the next week because no one will show up.
Oh, yes.
Uh, if we have a snow day this week.
Oh. Didn't? I know. Um, so, all those in favor of this?
Aye.
All as opposed? Okay, motion carries. Um, seven point two, adopt the CSSU calendar for sixteen seventeen. So, had you joined the meeting by the time you arrived?
I caught the tail end of it.
You caught the tail end of that?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, can I get a motion to adopt the CSSU calendar as amended in the CSSU meeting?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
And the discussion will be, so, somebody brought up a point where they were concerned that, you guys are all there. So, um, for the audience out there, that, um, having a couple of days in, you know, having it, four of them in September, then two in October, two in November, two, you know, there were some weeks, some months that had two. Uh, someone said, could we have them always on Tuesday and then adjust it at the end? So, we decided that we would do that because obviously you need the professional development up front. So, if you're going to make it consistent and change it at one end of this calendar. So, early release for K to eight schools will be every Tuesday, starting with the first full week of school. I shouldn't even say that, but it's like the, that first school week that, you know, that, you know? The, the fourth day of school, week, the week containing the fourth day of school. Um, and, you know, we will not have an early release for the final four Tuesdays of the year.
So, it works out to about May twenty-third or fourth?
Yeah. So, no early release on the, like, the week they come back from Memorial Day, so. Um, I don't, I mean, I think when this initially came out, there was a lot of conversation. Then when you put it in your newsletter last month, um, much less conversation. Did get a couple of emails, but definitely order of magnitude less. Um, so hopefully, everything is fine. I think we, it was Wilson that really wanted this and so hopefully this will help Wilson approve it so we can all go to this, so.
Great.
Um, so, any other discussion?
Not by me.
No?
Nope.
Okay. So, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Awesome, thank you.
Here we go. Yeah, that was, that was good. So, personnel, um, these resume, this resume was fun to read. This is great. Um, uh, all the resumes for all CSSU were great.
I know, gosh.
Um, can I get a motion to approve these two personnel actions?
So moved.
Second.
Bob seconds. So, um, a discussion, um, the new hire was, you know, that was pretty, uh, black and white. Leave of absence, you guys are totally in support of this? Okay. Um, any other comments? No?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, okay.
Excuse me.
And, so, can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Bob seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. And our next meeting dates, so, May third. I will call Tim and I will call Kathy for the special meeting to warn the June seventh vote.
Mm-hmm.
If you guys are all set.
Yep.
We have our regular meeting in only a couple of weeks, it's on the third week and we're on the fourth week here, so.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, then we, there is some discussion possibly of our retreat being up in the air because of, that came out of nowhere.
Interesting.
Why would we have a retreat if we're consolidating in a week later?
And redoing everything.
But.
So, what would you plan for in the retreat going forward?
But part of like that whole day is state of the school.
Right.
Right.
So.
So, yeah, it's still up in the air, still being talked about.
I mean, I, I didn't hear anything about that in any of our board chairs meetings, so. Um, and then CSSU, all those meetings are there, so then the other. Um, I'm going to try and get an Act forty-six meeting onto the select board agenda in May.
That's a good idea.
Some point, if, you know, I told them about this many months ago, to get onto that. Plus, it gets us into another distribution channel so that people can learn and say, you know, have questions and stuff like that. And that is, it, we will.
We do have an executive session.
Yeah, we're going to go into executive session.
She's also got one in Heinzberg and she hopes, I tried to get you in there first, so let's see if she gets her.
And, uh.
It's a matter of who finishes first, I just told her we're ready.
The race.
So, we can, so we'll adjourn from executive session, so.